Good evening. Can people please be seated? This March 21, 2019, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Sangster and White Oak Elementary Schools String Chamber Ensemble under the direction of Consuelo Sevilla.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on March 21, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? And that motion is unanimous. So a few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. The High School on English-Basil Instructional Materials approval and the monthly report on employee separations agenda items have been removed from tonight's consent agenda at the request of a Board member. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. Mr. Tigner is absent this evening, so I call on Mr. Moon for an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to recognize Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month. That's April 2019. April is Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month, which is a collaborative effort of the American Mathematical Society, the American Statistical Association, the Mathematical Association of America, and the Society for Industrial and Applied Mathematics. It marks a time to increase the understanding and appreciation of mathematics and statistics. Why? Both subjects play a significant role in addressing many real-world problems such as internet security, sustainability, disease, climate change, the data deluge, and much more. Research in these and other areas is ongoing, revealing new research and applications every day in fields such as medicine, manufacturing, energy, biotechnology, and business. Mathematics and statistics are important drivers of innovation in our technological world in which new systems and methodologies continue to become more complex. Also, we have a Boy Scout troops as well, 1532, from Anandale, Virginia. It's Mr. Bill Hutleston. He's a scout master. Oh, okay, way in the back. Thank you. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. We are welcoming back tonight Ms. Schultz, and she is asked to have a moment.
So, yes, I just want to acknowledge the help and assistance of a lot of people, particularly Angela Petro, my executive assistant in the School Board office, and the rest of the School Board office staff, to Jay Pearson, our interim Region 4 Assistant Superintendent, and Becky Baneig. I have been doing work behind the scenes since January, but I'm pleased to come back to the Board and do my work fully publicly. And for all of the people, retired employees, former employees, current employees, some of my children's teachers, neighbors, people of all persuasions across the county, for your thoughts and your actions over the last few weeks. It has been very, very meaningful to be in my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. We are glad you are back. Now I call on Ms. Strauss for the recognition of Autism Awareness Month.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Autism Awareness Month is celebrated every year in April to provide an opportunity for families, friends, and local communities to raise public awareness and acceptance of autism and the unique aspects and talents of all people. Autism is a complex developmental disability that affects an individual's social interaction and communication skills. It is known as a spectrum disorder because each child is different and is affected in unique ways with many strengths and challenges. Students with autism attend to many of our schools in Fairfax County and grow up to make meaningful contributions to the community. At this time, I would like to invite staff from the Department of Special Services and all those who are here this evening in support of Autism Awareness Month to please join us at the dais for a photo with the Board. Thank you.
Ma'am, we do have a public portion of this, ma'am. Ma'am, thank you very much. What an impressive group here tonight. Thank you so much for being here. I know that there are members of our ACSD as well as SEPTA, the parent group that's very involved in special education, PTA activities. So thank you all very much for being here. I do want to correct the record. There was a statement from the audience that we lock children in cages. I can assure you that Fairfax County Public Schools does not lock any children in cages. There are instances where we have had students in seclusion. Those have come to light in the media over the past couple of weeks. Please be assured that the School Board takes it very seriously that we have a caring culture here in Fairfax County Public Schools and that the only time that seclusion or restraint is ever used is to ensure the safety and security of individual students. And so I would like to assure the audience and people watching from home that this is an area that this School Board and the superintendent takes very seriously, and we are committed to ensuring that there is greater transparency in how our practices are conducted in all of our schools. But the tribute is, when you look at all of the fine men and women who came here tonight to be honored as teachers, as parents who are active in the community, it shows how much we care about all of our students. And those students with autism are a very important part of the fabric that makes up Fairfax County Public Schools. Thank you. This evening, we are pleased to recognize the Fairfax County Public Schools teachers who have earned or renewed National Board Certification for the 2018-19 school year. Also, please join me in welcoming members of the City of Fairfax School Board who are with us this evening to celebrate the accomplishment of teachers from Fairfax High School and Lanier Middle School. Joining us are City of Fairfax Schools Superintendent Dr. Phyllis Pajardo, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Diego Wilson, School Board Member Dr. Mitch Sutterfield. Thank you for coming this evening. It really means a lot to all of us. And now I call on Dr. Braybrand for the recognition.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Good evening, everyone. I would like to congratulate all of our teachers here on earning or renewing your National Board Certification. Let's give them a big round of applause. I just want to share with you, as FCPS leaders and accomplished educational professionals, your impact on student learning is unmatched. You are reflective practitioners. You've enhanced instruction. I know going through the National Board, I never did, but one of my colleagues did, to do all the video of you teaching and to analyze. He sent me a three-hour tape to analyze, and I was like, oh, my God, how many of these do you have to do? It really is a serious pursuit of excellence in teaching that you've done. And you have enhanced instruction, you have developed and demonstrated advanced teaching knowledge, and you have helped Fairfax County continuously implement best instructional practices. All of this around the goal of serving our students and reaching our goal of Portrait of a Graduate Attributes for Every Kid in Fairfax County. This program in Fairfax County started over 22 years ago. We have 486 teachers in Fairfax County who have maintained National Board Certification. 225 of them are currently still teaching in FCPS classrooms. So I just want you to know on behalf of the entire system, we're proud of your commitment to continuous learning and striving to be the best that you can be for your students, for your schools, and for Fairfax County Public Schools. Your focused work and reflective practice have supported us in achieving the goals in our strategic plan. Our Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement is proud to support those that are seeking initial certification or renewing by offering professional development and candidate support. Lisa Barrow, Director of Professional Growth and Career Development, will now come up to share some highlights about that rigorous process we were just talking about leading to National Board Certification. And again, I am very, very proud of you and look forward to the rest of this ceremony to congratulate you on a job well done. Ms. Barrow?
Thanks, Dr. Braybrand. I'm delighted to participate in the recognition of the accomplishments of these distinguished teachers along with our School Board, our leadership team, our administrators, and our guests. The National Board Program was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to improve practices in schools. National Board Certification is the most recognized voluntary professional certification available in education. Teachers are certified in 25 different areas, pre-K through 12th grade. The teachers we recognize tonight have earned or renewed their National Board Certification by successfully completing a voluntary assessment program designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who've met high standards based on what a teacher should know and be able to do. The process is designed to assess a teacher's ability to put into practice five core propositions which demonstrate that teachers are committed to students and their learning, know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects to students, are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning, think systematically about their practice and learn from experience, and are members of learning communities.
and are members of learning communities. In order to earn certification, teachers analyze their instructional practice and ability to meet the needs of their students. They submit videos of their teaching and provide student work samples that demonstrate academic growth, all of which are examined through a process of reflective analysis. At this time, I would like to introduce you to a newly certified, nationally-board certified teacher who is going to highlight her journey to National Board Certification. Ashley Cupfordson is a general music and chorus specialist at Island Creek Elementary School. She serves as a musician teacher with the Fairfax Choral Society Youth Program and as an adjunct faculty member at the American CODI Institute of Loyola University of Maryland. She holds a CODI certificate and Certificate of Study and Arts Integration from the Kennedy Center's Changing Education Through the Arts Program. Ashley is an active member of the National Association for Music Education and the Virginia Organization of CODI Educators, where she serves on the board as president-elect. Recently, examples of her work were featured in Teaching Music to Students with Special Needs, a practical resource by Dr. Hamel. As an instructional leader, she has served as a curriculum writer for the FCPS General Music Curriculum, a Pyramid Lead Music Teacher for the Hayfield Pyramid Schools, a presenter of professional development geared towards music educators. Ashley is a passionate educator who believes in the power of education and the power of music to connect people. She's a lifelong learner dedicated to ensuring that all students have access to high-quality, joyful music instruction. I know you'll join me in welcoming Ms. Cupfordson.
Good evening, fellow National Board Certified Teachers, supporters, and school board members. My name is Ashley Cupfordson. I am a music specialist focusing in elementary music education and vocal music, currently teaching at Island Creek Elementary, and I teach kindergarten through sixth grade. Two years ago, I found myself working tirelessly, nonstop, endlessly looking to craft musical experiences for my learners that would inspire them, give them tools to become lifelong music makers, and the global citizens that we hope for through Portrait of a Graduate. Through this pursuit, my own craft of teaching continued to improve. However, my passion for looking for the best instruction for my students was becoming overshadowed by my feeling of uncertainty. I kept wondering, is this enough? Is this the best? Am I putting my energy in the best parts of my instruction? I had heard about the National Boards before, and after speaking to a good friend of mine who had previously gone through the process, I realized that going through the process to pursue National Board Certification would answer all of those questions that I had. What I really was seeking was insight into my effectiveness as a teacher beyond my own narrow view, and it seemed that there would be no better way to find out than to become a National Board Certified Teacher. You see, as a music educator, it's not unusual for me to feel like I'm on an island. We often work alone or with maybe one other educator, therefore, we have few opportunities to learn and work from each other. I was also seeking feedback on my ability to teach music. So, last year, I began my National Board journey. As someone who doesn't do anything halfway, I went all the way in and submitted all of the components in one year rather than the several years that the National Board does allow. It was grueling work. Months and months of working late through the night, weekends, every break, researching, planning, and then replanning, videotaping, re-videotaping, writing, and rewriting. I entered the National Board process thinking that I would be evaluated on my peers in music education, and finally found out if my hard work had paid off in me being a good teacher. While it is true that I was evaluated by my peers, I found out much more than whether or not I was a good teacher. I discovered that truly, I am a lifelong learner. The reflective nature of the process exposed my weak points and led me to pursuing learning paths in order to strengthen those places. I continue to strive for the highest and seek out those aspects of my teaching that can be approved, and never again will I ever be satisfied with just good enough. Perhaps most importantly, I discovered how dedicated I am to this profession of education and my learners. So dedicated to being the best educator I can be for my students that I put myself through this rigorous and voluntary process to examine every aspect of my teaching to make it better for their learning. While I am no longer completing the components, I see the direct impact of my National Board Certification in my own classroom and my learners every day. The mentality of constant reflection and consideration for the standards for accomplished teaching have been ingrained in me and are a part of every lesson I write and every action I take with my learners. Every teacher should consider pursuing National Board Certification because every student deserves a teacher who is dedicated to the profession of education and to furthering themselves in order for their students to have the best education possible. I thank you all for being here today to recognize educators like myself who have worked tirelessly to demonstrate their commitment to their own professional learning growth and their students. Thank you.
Thanks for your dedication, Ms. Cupfordson. Let's give her another round of applause. Dr. Brabran, will you join me? We're going to honor our teachers by regions, and each region assistant superintendent or their designated this evening will be invited to participate by reading the names of our honorees. Please welcome our first reader, Evangeline Petrich, Executive Principal, Region Three. Ms. Petrich is going to recognize both Regions One and Three honorees this evening. The following teachers have achieved National Board Certification. Honorees, when your name is called, please come forward to accept your certificate, meet with Dr. Brabran, and walk towards the raise step and wait for your photo.
Can I offer that the board members may want to come out so that they can be thanking, rewarding, showing our appreciation for the hard work of these teachers? Or, well, why don't we stand in front and, yeah, and we can-
Stephanie Simsek of Oakden High School, Region One, earned the Mathematics Early Adolescence Certificate, Principal Jamie Lane.
Ashley Cupfordson of Island Creek Elementary School earned the Music Early and Middle Childhood Certificate, Principal Mike McCrina.
Alicia St. Jean of Mount Vernon High School, Region Three, earned the Social Studies History Adolescence and Young Adult Certificate, Principal Anthony Terrell.
Thank you. Can we welcome Dr. Fabio Zuluagua, Assistant Superintendent, Region Two?
Thank you, Lisa. It's such a great honor to be here tonight, recognizing the best teachers that we have in Fairfax County Public Schools. It is my pleasure to introduce Caitlin Baiton from Camelot Elementary School. Caitlin, come here, please. Come forward. She earned the Generalist Middle Childhood Certificate, Principal Eileen Flaherty. Eileen, please join us. Congratulations. Michelle McKenna of Columbia Elementary School. She earned the Art Early and Middle Childhood Certificate, Principal Mike Cunningham. Please join us. Congratulations, Michelle. Well done. Lisa Choi of Haycock Elementary School. Lisa, unfortunately, Lisa is here? No, she's not. Oh, I was super excited. Of Haycock Elementary School, earned the Literacy Reading Language Arts Early and Middle School Childhood Certificate, interim principal Augie Fratalli. And unfortunately, Lisa was unable to join us this evening, but let's give her a hand. She's an amazing teacher, an amazing teacher. And Hannah Lehman-Muhart of Holmes Middle School. She earns the Mathematics and Early Adolescence Certificate, Principal Margaret Barnes. She's on a recruitment field trip, and so I will join the podium for her. And Hannah was unable to join us this evening. Congratulations, teachers in Region Two.
Please welcome our reader, Jay Pearson, Interim Assistant Superintendent, Region Four.
Good evening. It's an honor and privilege to bring Emily Vanderhoff forward of Holly Elementary School. She earned the Generalist Middle Childhood Certificate and Principal Carrie Pyramin at Holly.
We want to recognize the presence of Becky Baneig tonight, our Assistant Superintendent for Region Five. She's joined us to recognize Charles Burtz of Lanier Middle School, and he was unable to attend the ceremony component of the evening. Now, if we could welcome Sloan Presidio, Assistant Superintendent, Instructional Services.
Thank you and good evening. It's my pleasure to welcome and help celebrate Lauren Herr of ESOL Instructional Support, who earned English as a New Language Early and Middle Childhood Certificate, Supervisor Jane Flickel.
Thank you. Please join me in recognizing the accomplishments of all of our newly nationally-board certified teachers. Congratulations. Before you go, let's invite our principals up for a photo to join our National Board. Our principals need to join for a photo. Please join us. Thank you. Would you like to stay? Would you like to stay for the renewed? And now, I'd like to have Annie Diaper, System Y Coordinator, join me to announce those honorees who have renewed their certification.
Thank you, Lisa. The following National Board Certified teachers have renewed their certificates. Honorees, please, when your name is called, come forward to accept your certificate, walk towards the raise step again, and wait for the group picture. Claudette Allen of Liberty Middle School, renewed Career and Technical Education Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood Certificate, Principal Adam Erbrecht. Amanda Bolden of Robinson Secondary School, renewed Mathematics, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood Certificate, Principal Matt Eline. Stella Santinini of Hayfield Elementary School, renewed Generalist Early Childhood Certificate, Principal Jessica Lewis. Sharon Clifford of Carson High School, renewed Social Studies History Early Adolescence Certificate, Principal Gordon Stokes. George Dewey of Chantilly High School, renewed Science, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood Certificate, Principal Scott Poole. April Doan of Shrevewood Elementary School, renewed Generalist Early Childhood Certificate, Principal Michelle Eugene. John Downs of Chantilly High School, renewed Social Studies History Adolescence of Young Adulthood Certificate, Principal Scott Poole. Maria Diaz of West Lawn Elementary School, renewed English as a New Language Early and Middle Childhood Certificate, Principal Linda Ferguson. Heather Gibson of Laurel Hill Elementary School, renewed Exceptional Needs Specialist Early Childhood through Young Adulthood Certificate, Principal Janice Dalton. Antoinette Kidwell of Mount Vernon High School, renewed Mathematics, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood Certificate, Principal Anthony Terrell. Rachel Lanier of London Town Elementary School, renewed Generalist Middle Childhood Certificate, Principal Weata Padmore. Selwyn Lawrence of South Lakes High School, renewed Career and Technical Education Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood Certificate, Principal Kim Retzer. Andrew Neal of Edison High School, renewed Social Studies History Adolescence and Young Adulthood Certificate, Principal Pamela Brumfield. Kimberly Owens of Pine Spring Elementary School, renewed Generalist Middle Childhood Certificate, Principal Nikki Yakovovich. Heather Fithian of Brenmar Park Elementary School, renewed- Heather Fithian of Brenmar Park Elementary School, renewed Generalist Early Childhood Certificate. Kimberly Scott of Chantilly High School, renewed English Language Arts Early Adolescence Certificate. Principal Scott Poole. Anna Slevin of Rocky Run Middle School, renewed English Language Arts Early Adolescence Certificate. Principal Amy Goodlow. Jessica Stebbins of Woodley Hills Elementary School, renewed Generalist Middle Childhood Certificate. Principal Sharon Aldridge. Natalie Valenzuela of Chantilly High School, renewed Exceptional Needs Specialist Early Childhood through Young Adulthood Certificate. Principal Scott Poole. Heather Walnok, Beechtree Elementary School, renewed Generalist Middle Childhood Certificate. Principal Kareem Daughtry. Greer Mancuso of Linear Middle School, renewed English as a New Language Early and Middle Childhood Certificate. Angela Hunter of Edison High School, renewed Social Studies, History, Adolescence and Young Adulthood Certificate. Principal Pamela Brumfield. Additionally, we would like to honor the following individuals who are being recognized for renewing their National Board Certification but were unable to attend this evening. Erin Fortenberry of Ravensworth Elementary School, renewed Art Early and Middle Childhood Certificate. Principal Roxanne Salata. Danielle Powers of Frost Middle School, renewed Library Media Early Childhood through Young Adulthood Certificate. Principal Anthony Harris. Heather Davids of Fairfax High School, renewed English Language Arts Adolescence and Young Adulthood Certificate. Principal Erin Leonard. Mark Hannam of Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, renewed Mathematics, Adolescence and Young Adulthood Certificate. Principal Anne Banatobis. That's good. Janice Jewell of Herndon High School, renewed English Language Arts Adolescence and Young Adulthood Certificate. Principal Liz Noto. Douglas Martin of Langley High School, renewed Music Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood Certificate. Principal Kim Greer. Terry Quinn of Spring Hill Elementary School, renewed Literacy Reading Language Arts Early and Middle Childhood Certificate. Principal Sarah Aiello. Megan Ring of Groveton Elementary School, renewed Generalist Middle Childhood Certificate. Principal James Swoger. Congratulations to all the renewed National Board Certified Teachers, and at this time we would like to invite the members of the School Board, Region Assistant Superintendents, their designees, and principals to come forward for a group photo with these accomplished teachers. We would like to invite Dr. Pajardo, Dr. Sutterfield, and other Fairfax City teachers being recognized to remain for an individual photo with your school board.
It's for Fairfax City. Yeah. How are you? How's growing out?
George Mason, studying art and getting into curation and museum.
Oh, I know, I know.
It's his 21st birthday.
So now you have to say hi and happy birthday.
21st.
On behalf of the Board, I want to congratulate this year's FCPS National Board Certified Teachers. They are to be commended for their dedication to helping students achieve success in and out of the classroom. Let's give them another round of applause. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the Board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us tonight. Our first speaker is Gordon Baer, followed by Amber Belcher.
It's so wet outside, but wouldn't you know, the moment I come to this podium, my mouth gets bone dry. So if I flub my words, please be kind. I'm Gordon Baer. Thanks for the intro. I am an alumni of FCPS schools K-12, and I am a current resident of Fairfax County, and I work on the Board of Glisten Northern Virginia, which is a local chapter of a national nonprofit, working on LGBT issues in K-12 education. Thank you for your work on the amicus brief in the Gavin Grimm case. Trans and gender nonconforming students deserve to be educated in an environment free from persecution, as we would all like to be. So your support in this brief would send a message very powerfully to a lot of the students in the region. Secondly, I know action might not be taken today on English basal materials, but I wanted to use it as an opportunity to discuss the need for LGBT inclusive curriculum in English and other core subjects. I am a huge proponent of that. My notes just got deleted off my phone, so I'm going to do this off the cuff. LGBT inclusive curriculum has been studied to decrease the hostility in a school's climate. Both Glisten and universities across the US have seen the trend towards a decrease in hostile school climate with the inclusion of LGBT inclusive curriculum. Now, this is curriculum that just gives light to LGBT persons' contributions in given fields. So, there's that. I'm going to yield to the next person, but thank you so much for listening to me, and have a good, it's wet, but you know, stay dry. Cool. I'm going to go.
Amber Belcher, followed by Robert Rigby.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amber Beekler. That's fine, no one ever gets it correct the first time. I'm a Herndon resident, I'm a steering committee member of Equality Loudon, and I volunteer for FCPS Pride and the Transgender Education Association. I want to thank you all for moving forward with the amicus brief in support of Gavin Grimm. I've not had the pleasure of meeting Gavin myself, but I am inspired to see someone two-thirds my age fighting for the rights of not just himself, but also other transgender students, because they need it. They need as many strong allies as they can get. I ask that, to be sure that you include a statement of acknowledgement that transgender students are the gender they identify with and deserve the same respect and dignity as all other students in FCPS. Just as I seek acceptance in my workplace, trans students just want to have the same opportunities and experiences as every other kid of their age. School is hard enough as it is, but trans kids may not drink or eat as much, so they don't have to go to the bathroom. And there's a reason why there's a high prevalence of urinary tract infection amongst the transgender community. And there is also an above-average experience of bullying and suicide than their cisgender peers. And studies have shown that that is because of outward effects of acceptance at home, but especially also acceptance and being able to be themselves in school as well. Commonly, you may hear an argument very often that allowing trans students to use the bathroom they prefer would increase sexual assaults in restrooms and locker rooms. However, there is no evidence that this would happen. Just a couple years ago, Justin Wilk of the PWC School Board reached out to every large US school district with LGBTQ-inclusive protections, and they found that there had been zero incidences of either a transgender student attacking or a cisgender student attacking wearing a dress of any students in restrooms across the country. This argument is just like any horror movie monster. It is scary in concept, but it's not real. You may also hear of, well, there's only two combinations of chromosomes, that there's XX and XY, and there's a bathroom for each. I have a bachelor's degree in biology, so I may be a little overqualified, but that is not true. That is just scientifically incorrect. There is XXY, there's XY of other combinations. There is more than just two, and science moves further every day to show, to back up where culture and society has been for years. And so, the truth is, what is true is transgender students are the gender they say they are, whether they are male, female, in-between, or outside of the gender binary, and they deserve the right to use a bathroom of their choice. So please include a strong statement of support for our transgender students. Thank you.
Robert Rigby, followed by Laura Baker and Mary Mathewson.
Good evening, School Board members and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby Jr. I am the president of FCPS Pride, which is a social welfare organization for parents of LGBTQ students and LGBTQ staff connected with Fairfax County Public Schools. Tonight, you are discussing the English basal materials. One thing to consider is inclusion of information, short stories, and sections of novels that include passages about LGBTQ people, including transgender people. There are many, many such age-appropriate materials. Some of these include reference to legal cases involving transgender students. We would like to thank you for moving forward with the amicus brief in Gavin Grimm's case and to share some thoughts. First, Gavin is an honored member of our community and a personal friend to many of us. We are pleased that the School Board is supporting him. Many people in Fairfax County are waiting on the outcome of this case with the hopes that it will enable the FCB to move forward. A statement in an amicus brief in support of transgender students would be a tremendous step forward in supporting transgender, binary, and non-binary students. It would be a clear declaration by the School Board that you think transgender and gender nonconforming people should be fully integrated members of our community. We have a couple of thoughts in addition. First, we think that Gavin's case is not the sine qua non or the without which nothing for writing a regulation. If decided in Gavin's favor, it would require school systems to accommodate trans kids, but even without it, we are still allowed to do so and should do so. It is important to members of our community that the School Board make a strong statement in support, recognizing transgender people as real in all aspects of their school lives. Transgender boys are real boys in all aspects of their lives. Non-binary and gender creative identities are real, and transgender girls are real girls all day in school. The brief written by the Arlington County School Board last year is a strong statement supporting transgender students in all aspects of their lives in school. It is a good point of reference. Thank you for listening.
Laura Baker, followed by Mary Mathewson and Carl Frisch.
My name is Laura Baker. I'm a parent and the SEPTA Twice Exceptional Committee Chair. I'm here to address the planned Advanced Academics Equity Study because I want to ensure that students with disabilities are not forgotten. The proposed AAP Equity Study is a welcome and necessary step to ensure that the advanced academic programs are not violating the civil rights of minority students, English language learners, and students with disabilities. FCPS has primarily focused their efforts on Title I schools, and I hope we see some impact from this. But as a disability advocate, I was disappointed that students with disabilities, also referred to as twice exceptional or 2E, barely got a mention in the AAP overview by Ms. Maloney and Dr. Presidio. As the Twice Exceptional Chair, I know there are roughly 2,000 identified 2E students in FCPS, our three largest special education categories being ADHD, dyslexia, and autism. These are brilliant kids with amazing gifts, but they require specialized instruction, behavioral support, and access to academic rigor to succeed. Students with autism in Virginia have doubled in the past nine years, and 2E students with complex behavioral needs are on the rise. 2E is not a new problem for FCPS. Between 2004 and 2012, FCCPTA, the ACSD, and the AAP Advisory Council studied the problems and made recommendations. But when I came on the scene in 2016, none of the recommendations had been implemented. I've spent the past three years organizing parents and collaborating with staff to address the recommendations one by one. But in the meantime, our 2E students in FCPS face impossible barriers. Special Ed and AAP systems are not designed to work in tandem and are often in direct conflict with each other. I happen to know firsthand that many of our brightest students are underachieving, suffering school refusal, and dropping out because we are failing them. After watching the School Board Work Session from 3:11, I do want to thank those of you who spoke up for 2E students, Ms. Corvett Sanders, Ms. Schultz, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Keys-Gamara, wherever she is. Hi. SEPTA's 2E parents have attempted to work with the county while simultaneously holding the county's feet to the fire. We are critical stakeholders in this study, and I suspect we would have been overlooked if you had not spoken up on our behalf. Dr. Braybrand has said transparency restores trust with stakeholders, and efforts at gathering equity data are important because we can't fix anything if we don't know it's broken. There is no greater broken trust in the school system than between schools and parents of students with disabilities, especially those with high potential who are struggling to succeed in Fairfax County. Please include- Please include SEPTA as a critical stakeholder in this AAP Equity Review. Thank you.
Mary Mathewson, followed by Carl Frisch and Amanda Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Mary Mathewson, and I'm an English teacher in Fairfax County. I'm here to talk about the need for more inclusive literature. To begin, I want to thank the School Board for moving forward with the amicus brief in the Gavin Grim case. It sends a good message of inclusivity. With that message in mind, I want to share a definition written by my 11th grade class when they were reading the book When I Was Puerto Rican by Esmeralda Santiago. It reads, "The American dream is the freedom to consciously take advantage of the opportunity to be who you are." Our classes are ethnically diverse, and that's a big part of the reason why the adoption of new literature needs to be an ongoing process. But what does inclusion really mean? My American Lit class is made up of 23 students, three seniors and 20 juniors, two white students, three Asian students, five African-American students, and 13 Hispanic students, 10 students for whom English is their second language with five different home languages, 15 males, seven females, and one still trying to figure it out. All of these categories of kids brings a set of experiences with them to the classroom. They have belief systems that define what's moral both from their parents and what they've chosen for themselves. They all have a cultural background that allows or disallows their acceptance of people's experiences when those experiences are different from their own. They all have a comfort zone that needs to be both challenged and defended so that we, as teachers, can help them develop into productive, compassionate, involved, and evolving adults who define what America will be and what an American can be. The classics are a part of our history. They explore the foundation of American culture, but they are only one part of a diverse collection of beliefs, morals, and experiences. We need to make sure we're including all of our students in that journey to self-discovery. We need literature that allows all students to examine perspective, experience, struggle, status, and the most current reality of family dynamics. In addition to including ethnic diversity, we need to include diversity in how people define themselves, specifically when it comes to gender, even when that definition is not what we would call conforming. The literature we use in the classroom doesn't have enough of that. While our core texts are more ethnically diverse, I don't have anything to offer my LGBTQ students. They can't relate to the typical experiences of our most common literary heroes. We need literature that explores the realistic identity development of every student in the 21st century, all shades of Caucasian, all shades of brown, all levels of English-language acquisition, and the whole spectrum of sexual and gender identity. Thank you for listening.
Carl Frisch, followed by Amanda Campbell and Kathy Mallard.
All right. Let me begin by saying thank you for letting me speak to the School Board and staff. My name is Carl Frisch. I live in Providence District. My partner is a teacher here in Fairfax County for the last 13 years. Tonight, you were slated to be talking about the different instruction materials that are being reviewed. There are new titles in the mix that address things like journalism and reporting. They couldn't come at a better time. And they have a possibility of providing students with real-world learning opportunities. Perhaps if some of these materials were already in use, students would be here tonight putting their new journalism skills to work as the School Board takes a stand in favor of simple human dignity and equality for all of our students. I join others in applauding the School Board's history on these issues and its decision to move forward with an amicus brief in support of Gavin Grim's case against Gloucester County School Board. Amicus briefs are submitted to the court by an amicus curi, which is Latin for friend of the court. That translation is apropos tonight. When Gavin Grim faced discrimination at his school, he needed more friends on his School Board. Your amicus brief can stand up for Gavin Grim, and in doing so, it can stand up for the other Gavin Grims right here in Fairfax County. It can send a powerful message to support that there is support for transgender and non-binary students and that they have friends on this School Board. Such a move would have a clear declaration that this School Board believes transgender and non-binary students are deserving of the same dignity, respect, and rights as anyone else, and that they are fully integrated in our school community. Let me be clear. Mr. Grim's case is an important one. If he is successful, it could require all school systems to accommodate trans kids. If he is not successful, that shouldn't stop this School Board from doing precisely that. Trans boys and trans girls are no different than any other child. They should be treated equally by the Fairfax County School Board in all aspects of their lives. Anything less would be a betrayal of the principles of equity and opportunity that many of us talk about every single day.
I lost a page somewhere. Just a second. There we go. Sorry. Good evening. I am here tonight speaking as an individual member of the Fairfax County Special Education PTA. Given that the Board is recognizing Autism Awareness Month this evening, I believe it is important to open a dialogue regarding an issue that affects students with disabilities, the use and documentation of restraint and seclusion in FCPS. I'm sure you are all aware of the reports published by WAMU this last week and today. I listened to the radio show as well, and I was incredibly disappointed that FCPS chose to decline the invitation to be present in the discussion. The initial statement provided by the district stating that, in part, quote, "We believe seclusion and restraint in management of severe student behavior is being used appropriately," end quote, is incredibly dismissive to the families that spoke out about how their children were treated. I appreciate that the district has since come out with a statement indicating that you will be thoroughly investigating the use and documentation of restraint and seclusion, but it does not excuse the tone of the initial response released by the district. There are both local and nationwide problems that exist in how students with disabilities are treated with regards to severe behaviors that are a manifestation of their disability. According to the Office of Civil Rights, 122,000 students across the nation were physically restrained, mechanically restrained, or secluded in 2015, 2016. And of that number, students with disabilities represented 71% of all students restrained and 66% of all students secluded. FCPS's own strategic plan documents show that students with disabilities make up 14% of the student population and yet represent 40% of all discipline cases in the county. And these statistics are just from the documented incidents, and there is much that goes undocumented. Virginia is taking steps to address this at the state level, as seen by their town hall on restraint and seclusion earlier today. Research has shown, however, that of the 10 states with the highest incident levels of restraint and seclusion, six had meaningful prohibitions meant to limit the practice. It is clear to me that local districts must take the lead on this issue in order for any meaningful progress to be made. As for what FCPS can do, I have a few thoughts. FCPS must involve the community in the process of this investigation. Stakeholder groups like SEPTA, the ACSD, et cetera, must be consulted throughout the process. FCPS should also schedule a public hearing on the issue of restraint and seclusion so that the community has an opportunity to voice their experiences and concerns before FCPS renders any decisions on how to move forward. Mechanical restraints and prone restraints must be prohibited. Clearly define, if not prohibit, seclusion. Involuntarily removing a person from their typical placement to a one-on-one setting with supervision with the door unlocked would be considered seclusion in a mental health setting. The same should be true in schools. All incidents of restraint and seclusion must be documented in writing. Verbal communication alone is not sufficient. Parents must be notified within 24 hours. There are more ideas in the documents I provided with my testimony. On a personal note, I am well aware that there are amazing teachers in schools in FCPS. My daughter attends one of those schools, and her team is amazing. That said, thank you.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to state my opposition to authorizing funding for the Lee High School turf replacement because artificial turf has been shown to release toxins into humans in the environment. Artificial turf can cause concussions and knee injuries, and there are also dangerous heat traps that are prone to causing heat exhaustion. In addition, I want to say that it appears that the School Board is not being open with the public about promoting and passing certain policies. The School Board used taxpayer money to politically lobby and promote an amicus brief in the Grims case. This position could injure young females while resulting in violations of Title IX laws by discriminating against females, resulting in unfair and unequal competition and undermining the integrity of female sports. I ask, is the School Board opposed to protecting female students from being forced to share showers and dressing rooms with any person who possesses a penis and testicles? I speak today as a parent of female and male students who are active in competitive sports in Fairfax County Public Schools. School sports in Fairfax are separated into two groups, one for boys, one for girls. Does the Fairfax County Public Schools justify having separate sports groups based on the sex of the student? Shouldn't boys and girls all compete together regardless of their sex? Does the Fairfax County School Board recognize that having females compete in sports with males would be unfair to the females in view of the scientifically proven physical differences between the sexes, including in muscle composition and especially between males and females who've gone through the two respective puberty processes? The great African-American sprinter, Wilma Rudolph, achieved Olympic championships in women's sprinting. She would not have achieved such records, and Wilma Rudolph would be unknown today if she had had to compete with males who had gone through male puberty, such as Jesse Owens. Similarly, women's tennis stars Serena Williams and Martina Navratilova would be unknown today if they had to compete against males. Will the Fairfax County School Board uphold the fairness and integrity of girls and women's competitive sports? Will the School Board guarantee that female students not be forced to compete in sports with any person who has been born male with XY chromosomes, penis, testicles, and has gone through male puberty? Will the School Board guarantee that females that are taking male hormones and organic compounds not be permitted to compete in sports with females who were born with XX chromosomes and have only natural female hormones in their body? Also, will the School Board guarantee that students, faculty, and staff be protected against coercion and retribution if they express opposition to participation in sports with persons with male bodies? Thank you very much. The integrity of female sports.
Good evening. I want to congratulate all of the National School Board honorees tonight. Wonderful job. My name is Tabitha Walter. My family and I are residents of Fairfax County. I appreciate you allowing me to talk on the Lee High School turf contract. I oppose the authorization of $500,000 for this project. Artificial turf has been shown to release toxins, cause bodily harm to students, and can trap heat inside. This can be extremely dangerous for Fairfax County students that would leave long-lasting effects on their health. Similarly, I would like to address a dangerous situation that you, the School Board, are continuing to put our children in. It has been reported that this Board is instructing your lawyers to draft and file an amicus brief in the Gloucester County Schools transgender case. Apparently, you're going to intervene in this case against the school's district policy of protecting the privacy and well-being of girls and boys keeping their sex segregated private spaces separated by sex. Gloucester County was even willing to provide a private bathroom to a student identifying as an opposite gender, but that's not good enough for the plaintiff or for you. You have given no notice to Fairfax County residents about your plans to intervene in another school district's lawsuit. The secrecy is appalling and unethical. And what business is it of yours to tell Gloucester County what to do? You are simply spending our hard-earned taxpayer dollars to make a political point. This amicus brief doesn't help any of our students. It is just a way to push Fairfax politics on other children and families. Instead, the School Board should focus on protecting our students' privacy. Bathrooms are very vulnerable spaces, especially for developing children and for those suffering from gender dysphoria. Studies have shown that six out of 10 students will experience some form of physical, sexual harassment in school, many of these incidents going unreported. Allowing boys and girls private spaces and vice versa will only increase that number. Why are you waiting for these incidents to happen instead of preventing them? On behalf of the safety of our daughters and our sons, I ask that you not move forward with this amicus brief.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Champion, and I'm the parent of two adult children, one of which has a diagnosis of autism at the age of four and another diagnosis of PANDAS, which is an autoimmune disorder. I'm going to start with an analogy. So I'm sitting at an IEP meeting, and I'm the only person there on my side of the table, and everybody else is -- there's eight other people there, and they all represent the school district. So that's 16 eyes sitting there blinking at me. Somebody's clicking their pen, somebody's chewing their gum, somebody else is whispering to the person next to them. I'm trying to talk about what my son needs as far as his educational accommodation, and I'm getting more and more frustrated because I don't seem to be getting any response or nobody's buying into what I'm saying. So I pound my hand on the table. Papers go flying. They view what I just did as aggressive. I thought I was just making my point. I was upset. They jump up, grab me, throw me down on the ground, hold me down, all the while yelling for more people to come, help them take me to a room down the hall so I can cool off. Now, this actually kind of happened to my son, and four adults held him on the floor in a darkened room for 90 minutes. Now, this is a stack of papers, and I hate to disabuse you, but yes, they are put in seclusion rooms, and they are held there. In 2013 through 14, 175 times, one child. Same child. 2014 through 2015, 151 times. 2016, 15 through 2016, 111 times. Same child. So that's 437 times. So with the regulations coming out for restraint and seclusion, we've got to ban prone restraint. Only use restraint and seclusion where there's a threat of imminent, serious physical harm. Forbid use of restraint and seclusion for mere property damage. Eliminate the regulation allowing restraint and seclusion to be used to maintain order and control. You've got to ban prone restraint. Children die. Require schools to notify parents immediately. You need a public hearing on this. Never use restraint and seclusion when it could harm the child medically or psychologically as documented by the child's IEP team. You need training. There's a school in Northern Virginia called Grafton. They no longer use restraint and seclusion. And I will tell you, they've had a 64% decline in client-induced staff injury and estimate savings of, and this should catch your attention, $16 million in associated costs from overtime, turnover, and workers' compensation. Stop treating children like POWs. Thank you.
This is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm -- oh, actually, sorry I call on Ms. Darrenack Kofax for a -- I call on Ms. Darrenak Kofax for a motion.
I move that the board approve the titles listed for high school language arts as recommended by the Language Arts Basel Instruction Materials Adoption Committee and the Selection Advisory Committee.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Strauss. Ms. Darrenak Kofax, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I'll yield my time to Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'm coming. Okay. I wanted to take this opportunity because we had a few speakers that spoke about the Basel curriculum and mentioning various groups. One lady spoke eloquently regarding, she was actually a teacher, and spoke eloquently about having a book about being Puerto Rican, and we've had folks talk about the LGBT community as well. I do think it's very important that our curriculum is reflective of the diversity of our students. I can tell you as a parent where my sons were introduced very early to images that look like themselves, but unfortunately, all of them were slaves or somehow tied to oppressive images. That is damaging, not just to the child, that the person that is looking like, to someone that looks like them, but also to everyone around them. We need only look to events of February in the state of Virginia to realize that this is true. When we do not tell the whole story about our history, when we do not acknowledge people in our community and how they have contributed to who we are as a state, it hurts everyone. And so I simply wanted to make a statement so that we can work together and continue to work to make sure that our curriculum is reflective of who we are, because that truly is how we build everyone in our community, so that they not only feel good about who they are, but we learn to respect one another. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
I think Ms. Keys-Gamarra did a great job. Thank you very much for your remarks.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that Ms. Keys-Gamarra has raised important points in acknowledging folks who've been at the podium tonight talking about and identifying what they see as deficiencies in the titles that are recommended. I guess I wonder whether or not this isn't even an important topic that we should discuss in review as a board, given the comments that we received tonight. I don't know whether other board members would feel the same, but rather than, I mean, this was a consent agenda item, so typically we wouldn't even have this level of discussion, but given what we've heard tonight, I think maybe we, as a board, should step back and table this approval so that we can have a more fulsome conversation about the titles that are included.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, as it happens. Mr. McElvein and I are working with Dr. Presidio on a forum topic now. We hadn't yet brought it to the rest of the board, but I think many of us have been approached particularly about our social studies and history curriculum by members of the community from traditionally underrepresented communities. And so I want to thank Dr. Presidio and Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Duran. We had a conversation recently with Mr. McElvein, just last week, in fact, and we got an update on what the Office of Equity is already doing to try to improve our cultural responsiveness, our cultural accuracy, our historic accuracy. And I think our forum topic will likely ask for a work session so that the board and the community can be brought up to speed on the work that's already happening. And then also, I think there's a desire, and we're still working on what the language would be, I think there is a desire in the community for some input on curriculum and training, because of course, this goes beyond textbooks. It goes beyond, you know, the novels that the kids read. Curriculum is so much, and it has so much to do with professional development and training. So as I say, the forum topic is in the works, which is why I apologize, neither Mr. McElvein nor I has even talked to any other board members about it, but I do agree with the comments that have been made tonight and the groups that have come to me with the concern that we do need to do better with our curriculum, and we need to make sure that we are centering the voices of those most affected and most interested. But I think also, we should probably hear from the Office of Equity about some of the good work that's going on, and we have not yet. And I know it's in the works, but I think it'd be good for the board to know what we're doing so far. But I also think it's extremely important for us to figure out how to allow public review and comment on as much of our curriculum as we can make available and our professional development as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I first want to say, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, I appreciate that you pulled this from our consent agenda. I'm a bit perplexed why we find ourselves on something like a Basel cell adoption, that we're doing this. This particular year, the Braddock District was one of the magisterial districts where we would appoint someone to serve on the committee, and I was receiving updates from my appointee, but it's not that every single school board member had one. And so, you know, I'm uncomfortable, honestly, in voting on this tonight as an action item. I think I would have preferred that we would have had at least a one-hour work session where the fact that we had a committee that worked on this and worked with staff and clearly had, I mean, they met multiple times. And I just think that when the board ends up having responsibility like this to vote on something, even though I appreciate the tremendous work that staff and the volunteer committee members served on it, we're being asked to put our hands in the air and vote on something. So I guess in response to what Mr. Wilson said, I would ask, not to put anybody on the spot, but either Dr. Braybrand or Dr. Presidio, if one of you could maybe speak to, if there's a, would it present a challenge if we were to postpone this vote? Just, we've got absolutely nothing on our agenda two weeks from now, and we have a work session on Monday. Could we not just have a one-hour board discussion and presentation about why the recommendation and what the committee had to say, and then it would really only be a two-hour postponement of tonight's vote?
Yes. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this item, and I would say that we could certainly delay the vote tonight, but we would still want to have a work session in a timely manner. So Monday certainly would be okay. I don't know if the agenda would accommodate that. But the reason for the urgency really around this is we do need to move forward with contractual negotiations. So the board's vote tonight would just affirm adoption of the materials that the committee, which has been working on this since October of 2018, has selected. And as soon as we have approval for that, then we enter contractual negotiations. And the reason it's important that we begin that process is we want to be able to get the materials in the hands of teachers before they leave for the summer holiday, because it's really important for the teachers to have an opportunity to understand the materials, begin to work with them and plan with them, and kind of get a head start on the year. So certainly, we could delay the vote, but if the board chooses to do that, we'd like to schedule a work session as soon as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. So in follow-up to my question on that, one thought that occurred to me is when you were working with the committee on this and the recommendation that's before the board tonight, was it unanimous? Was there any, you know, sort of vocal dissent among committee members where it wasn't sort of a clear consensus about what's being put before the board? I mean, if it turns out that the committee, again, fully supports it unanimously, then it would leave it less difficult for, I think, the board to be concerned. That's the whole point of a working committee, but that would be my bigger concern, is if there wasn't sort of a strong consensus on what's being brought before us.
There was a strong consensus. I think a few other points that the board might want to consider, I'll speak to them briefly just tonight. All of the comments by the board members and the speakers here tonight are incredibly important about the representativeness of our curriculum, and we take that to heart, and it's something that we're working on very seriously. As part of this adoption process, we actually used a new tool to review all of the materials from the different vendors and the different publishers to look at issues of cultural representation. So looking for examples in how students are depicted in literature, how individuals are actually depicted as experts, so making sure that we have selections from a diversity of writers. And this tool that we developed was actually developed by a new staff member that we had the opportunity to hire in the fall as part of the Equity Office expansion. We had an opportunity to hire a multicultural curriculum resource teacher, and we hired Dr. Deborah March, who has a PhD in African-American Studies from Yale University, and she's been tremendous in helping us think differently about our curriculum and just start to kind of scratch the surface of some of the issues that we know that we need to address. So again, we'd be happy to provide more information to the board in more detail about that work, but that was something that was considered as part of the adoption process. The other thing I would just kind of highlight in terms of urgency is that we do have new state standards, and the SOL tests will be based on those new standards next year, and we have not adopted new materials to be in alignment with those standards, and those standards changes. So we are anxious to be able to move forward, but we certainly understand the questions that the board has.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. To my colleagues, I would just say that I'm curious to see where you all are on if it turns out that postponing to our next business meeting in two weeks might give people a little more comfort. I'm supportive of that. If people feel that that's, the delay isn't necessary, I do want to hear what you're thinking before we vote.
So is it your intention to offer a, have Mr. Wilson offer an amendment, and you second it to postpone the adoption of the Basel materials until the 4th of April, which is our next business meeting, and in the interim, have a work session on that?
I would like to get the input from my colleagues before I would support a motion like that. If, we are a body of 12, and so it's, I don't want to put forth, have Mr. Wilson necessarily put forward a motion if there's not going to be some sort of support from, so I just think people should speak to that, and then we'll know whether to put forward that alternative.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I see a lot of lights still on, so if you are not intending to speak, please turn off your lights. Okay, so now I have, Ms. Evans hasn't spoken to this, Ms. Strauss, followed by a go-back for Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Ms. Keys-Gamarra for raising this and also for members of the public for raising this. I do think that this would warrant more consideration and more of a review, because this has been raised. Typically, we don't get this kind of a response when we're adopting these kinds of materials. So, you know, we often rely on our appointees. We do bring members of the public in to review this, but I did want to ask Dr. Presidio, beyond the appointees and the citizens, was there an official opportunity just for members of the public, for the parents, to review? Did we actively go out and seek that?
Yeah, so we followed our existing policies and regulations, which call for a public review period. We received 22 comments. Those comments are posted on board docs in full tonight. So we did not receive a lot of public comment.
I'm sorry?
We did not receive a lot of public comment.
You did not receive, okay. So I think that tells us something. It's one thing to offer the opportunity, it's another to, when people come to us and say, we need to be a little bit more thoughtful. I don't think it would harm anything to give each of us an opportunity and give members of the public an opportunity to provide more comments. So I would support delaying this and having a conversation and have the materials available to us and to members of the public, just to give us a little bit more time to weigh in and see if we just need to move forward with what's here or if we have other opportunities. So thank you again, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, for raising it, and to Ms. McLaughlin's question, I would support moving this on to the next, the agenda at our next regular meeting.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Presidio, for giving all the information as to the work that has been ongoing, I believe, since October. And thank you for sharing that we have had an expert, not only in equity, but in cultural matters, to make sure that we meet all of our goals. There are 10 books. Would it be possible for all school board members to be given a set of all 10 of the textbooks by tomorrow so that we could read them and be prepared for a discussion on Monday? I don't know how else we would do this. There are 10 textbooks. Okay, well, that's what I'm wondering, what people would like to do. This is a significant adoption, and certainly, we can take a look at it, but I don't know at what level people are interested, because it would take, if we're really going to look at this, we really, I think, need to be able to spend some time and notes and do some research, if that's what people are after. I personally am pleased with the amounts of work that has gone into this, and it is important that they meet all of the goals, but I also know that we must get to the contracting phase so that these can be ordered, so that our teachers will have them in place. I think that's our realistic goal. So that would be my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I have a go-back by Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually would support Mr. Wilson's move. I initially was really just trying to make a statement, but the more that I think about this, the more that I realize that the community, while we, our staff has done an excellent job in seeking as much information as possible, the buck stops with this board. We are the ones that will be held responsible for the outcome of what we are presenting. And I think that we already sought information from Dr. Presidio, making sure that we're not throwing a wrench in the process so that we can still move forward. But as one board member, and I know I can only speak for myself, I feel a responsibility. You know, I have to say that I had to spend a lot of years correcting the lack of and the inappropriate information that was given to my son. I had to go to his school and sit down and listen to his students next to him, ask him whether his family members were slaves, because our curriculum was centered on if you are black, then you were associated with slavery. So we have an opportunity to correct and to really receive information so that perhaps we can protect some families from what I believe could have been irreparable harm. I was fortunate enough that I was able to teach African-American history in my home. I'm not sure that a lot of families are able to do that. And so I do feel a responsibility here, and I would support the motion.
So before I take a vote, I do have a question, and it's really on logistics of this. With postponing until April 4th, is there a possibility to have a, because there's lots of really good information on board docs as to who, what comments were provided, the process that was used, but I think there is a wish by members of this board to take a deeper dive as to the content of the 10 titles that are here. I don't believe that in the next few days, these board members are going to be able to actually review all 10 titles. What would be very helpful, and I don't know if this is possible, Dr. Duran and Dr. Presidio, but is there somebody who can put together a chart that has all 10 titles and the scoring associated with the diversity and equity parameters that, Dr. Presidio, you were indicating the new staff member looked at with their software, so that we have a, that this board can have the comfort of knowing whether or not, or the level and depth of diversity, diversity of learning the level and depth of diversity, of, diversity of learning materials in these, in these 10 titles? Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I'm not sure how long it would take to put that information together. We are talking about 10 different texts that we need to look at. And I'd hesitate to commit to a timeline without conferring with the Language Arts Coordinator on that. But obviously, we want to expedite the process, so if that's the request of the board, we would put it together as soon as practicable.
What is the deadline by which you have to contract with the various vendors to have books in hand for each of the teachers before they leave for the summer?
Well, there's a number of factors that go into that, some which involve my department, many of which involve the Office of Procurement, so again, without committing them to a certain timeline. I'd like to try, if possible, to have a decision from the board within the next two weeks.
If you don't mind, thank you. Maybe, because my feeling is, I'm, I'm willing to go with giving it another two weeks and to look at what we can get, maybe on Monday night, you know, whatever you have. I think there is a lot of information here, and maybe it's just a matter of pulling it into a format that is a little bit easier for us to, and for the community, to say this is on our agenda for the work session, and we'll have a PowerPoint or something where it's a little more digestible publicly for everyone. And whatever additional information you have about diversity and all, that would be helpful. Personally, I think, you know, basal readers, that's, you know, are not the whole curriculum. We know that, right? I mean, textbooks are usually only a part of the curriculum. And so I still think we need to do a much larger, we need to have a much larger conversation with the community about our curriculum and our professional development, our teacher training on cultural and historical accuracy and respect. But I think if this gives board members and members of the public a little more comfort to wait a couple of weeks, I could support that.
So with that, I'm going to take the vote. And the motion, I'm going to, Mr. Wilson, would you like to restate your motion?
I guess, Madam Chair, I'd be curious to what you and Ms. Dernak-Kofax, what your thoughts are, because we're, there are eight of us, a third of the board is missing. So I think, rather than have the potential for a deadlock, I think I'd like to hear before I make a motion. So what is your opinion, I guess is what I'm saying, on the potential for a motion? I haven't made a motion, but I think, I think we.
You should just make a motion and let them vote.
I will be happy to support a motion to postpone by two weeks, but I don't think that required me to say this before I raised my hand. No, I was asking for a vote. So, Ms. Keys-Gamara, or you, first, Mr. Wilson, are you planning on making a motion, or shall I ask Ms. Keys-Gamara to make the motion to postpone by two weeks?
I would also like to know Ms. Dernak-Kofax's opinion as well.
All right, it was my, I, I think different people have changed their mind as we sat here at the board table. When I made the motion, I understood that we were going to move ahead with this. And so as I listen to people, I think we have a process. I think the process is a good one. I think the process has been going on for months. I think if we, as a board, feel like we can make any inroads on a process in the next two weeks, I'll be happy to support it. I don't know, I, I think it's a larger, we have other questions here for a more extensive topic on this at, at another time, because I feel like the process that we use is one that we've used before. And that's why it was originally on the consent agenda. I do understand why people wanted to make comments, and, and I, and I, and I get that, and I appreciate that. But I think those topics are ones for, will require greater discussion than what we can quickly get through Monday evening. And then, and whatever, Dr. Presidio, he seems, you know, I, I know he'll get to us whatever he can, but it's a, it's a lot of, it's a lot of things condensed into for, for, for what I think the board has good reasons to want to review these types, these types of issues that were brought forth at this table. But I don't know if this is the right way to do it.
Okay. I would make the motion, Madam Chair, if that's appropriate now.
So the motion that you are making, Mr. Wilson, is?
I would make the motion, Madam Chair, that the board receive, delay the vote on this matter tonight, and that it receives a briefing on this topic at the next available time on a work session, and then followed by an appropriate time on the regular meeting schedule to have this vote. I think it is be helpful, I think we've heard too much tonight, both from the dais and from our fellow board members, to, to vote on this now would seem very premature, and I think it would allow the public to weigh in and have input to each of their board members, and perhaps to provide us additional information. So I, that would be my motion to, to delay the vote tonight, to allow for briefing at a work session and for questions following that at the next available time at a, at a regular scheduled board meeting.
So we actually need you to have a date certain for delaying the vote on this? So may I, can I reformat that a bit for you, just one second?
Well, I would say, Madam Chair, since you create the schedule, and, and at weekly meetings, and chairs make the agenda, I would leave that up to your discretion. If you, if you think that that's possible, after one work session next week, to have a vote at the, the next board meeting, then, okay. But that seems like a very compressed timeframe to me.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm not sure that was quite a motion. I'm going to try to be succinct in restating this. And then I will see if there, if this is the motion you would like to make. And if you do not want to make the motion, I will see if anybody else wants to make the motion. The motion is to postpone the adoption of the basal English, the high school English basal instructional materials until April 4th, the next, which is the next board meeting, and to schedule a one-hour work session to discuss the materials that are to be approved at that date.
That is acceptable to me, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second, seconded by Ms. Keys-Gamara? All those in favor? Yes.
You can speak to the motion.
I thought we had all spoken to that motion quite extensively, but we can go ahead and speak more to it. Mr. Wilson, as the maker of the motion, would you like to speak to it anymore?
No, I think I've said enough, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara, as the seconder of the motion, would you like to speak more to it?
No, I, I think I've expressed myself, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. McLaughlin, you would like to speak?
Yes, thank you for the warm invitation to speak. I, the reason I would like to speak ever so briefly is because there has been a lot of confusion about what we're going to expect Dr. Presidio to bring, and I presume, based on the calendar, that it may be as soon as Monday. So I wanted, as someone who spoke to this proposal, to just simply say, I think if staff brings a summary of what the committee's recommendation had been, I was reading through what my appointee had said, and there was consensus on some things, there were a few things where they were a little bit conflicted and, and had some debate. I think if we just get that summary in a public setting, which is what our work sessions are, it's not just for the board's benefit, but the public can then have that sort of digested presentation of what the committee did, and it raises awareness to, to the committee's work, and why the board would then be confident moving forward with the April 4th vote. So I, I wanted to speak to it because I was concerned that Dr. Presidio and perhaps Dr. Brayran started to worry a little bit about how massive of an expectation was from the board. I think Ms. Hines said it best, it's just compressing and summarizing a lot of what was posted, and let's just have a public discussion at a work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Strauss, please.
Yes, I just wanted, I believe our only opportunity for a meeting is on Monday evening, which has a full agenda already. And I just thought, since the public can't see what we're seeing, the titles of the books in question, there's one called No Red Ink, which is a 9 through 12 textbook, My Perspectives by Pearson, 9 through 12, ITIT, which is an intervention support textbook, another AP Advanced Placement Course, Writing, America, Language and Composition and Contest Text, another AP textbook, Literature and Introduction to Writing and Reading and Writing, for an elective course, Glencoe Speech, for an elective course on Journalism Matters, an elective course, The Art of Public Speaking, an elective course on Inside Reporting, an elective course, The Art of Watching Film. So these are the books that the committee has, has asked that they be purchased. I would hope that we would have multiple copies of the books for people to, I mean, if that's really what people are interested in seeing, what they look like, so that they can be available, I guess, in the school board office as of tomorrow, and people can come through and, and page through and see as much as, as you can read. I think that's fair. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Dr. Brayran, can I just ask you to wait one moment until Ms. Palchuk has a comment, please?
Thank you. It's more of a question in the process. I, and I apologize if this was answerable, I had to step away. So I appreciate having the, hopefully, possibility to review the recommended materials. I guess my question would be, coming in at this point in the process, are we able to look at alternatives? Is there a chance to be able to, to see if something is not appropriate, what would be another option? I guess I'd like to know, so if, if we say a text is not appropriate, then, then what comes next in that process?
Then according to our policies and regulations, we would reconvene the committee, and the committee would begin their work again. And that is a months-long process. So we would not have instructional materials at the beginning of the school year to address the new state standards, most likely.
Hold on one second. Ms. Palchuk, are you finished?
I'm happy to hear from the, the makers of the motion. I completely agree and support the, the intent, and I guess I'm just trying to better understand. It might have been explained when I walked away, if we're looking, and I think we're looking to address the whole process, but for the specific one, at this point, I guess if you could restate the goal of the additional two weeks and what we hope to be able to do during that time, I guess that's the question. I'm not saying yea or nay, just wanted to get that in.
Dr. Brayran, do you want to respond, and then?
I guess I would love to ask the makers of the motion. And if you already responded, I would love it if you, if you could reiterate that, I would, I would appreciate it.
So, Ms. Palchuk, the idea of postponing by two weeks was raised so that people could better understand how the instructional materials that are, that make up this package of materials, and there are 10, 10 titles, how they are reflective or not reflective of the diversity goals that have been expressed, not only by speakers here, but more importantly, by the work that this board has done on equity and the work that Dr. Duran and others are doing. So it's really to better understand what people are putting their hands up in support of on April 4th. We have been told by Dr. Presidio that April 4th is about the last date, that we could do this and ensure that the materials are available for next year.
And I appreciate, so I guess my, my question, I think I'm understanding the process correctly, and my only pause is, for me, if I get a chance to review these, and I say, "These materials are not reflective," I don't really have any choice, other than to continue through the process this year, unless we don't decide not to have materials when we start the school year. I'm just, am I understanding it correctly? I, I get it, reviewing the materials, I look forward to reviewing them. And at this point, the only thing we're asking for as a board is to be able to understand how reflective or non-reflective these materials are of the diversity we want to show in our materials. But we, just to be very clear with us, with the public, that we will not necessarily have the opportunity, within those two weeks, to make any changes to those chosen materials. I just want to clarify, I stepped away, I think that's what I heard, and I just want to be clear if I'm understanding this correctly.
I have Ms. Evans in queue, and then I will go to Dr. Brayran, and then, okay, let's.
Just very quickly, I wanted to support what Mrs. Strauss said about having the materials available. I, I don't know that we need to have one per board member, but if we could have a couple of copies in the school board office and then available when we have the, the work session itself, is that doable? Okay, I'm seeing nods, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I have Dr. Brayran?
This may help the board some. You try to listen as a superintendent and understand what the board is trying to say. And I think, I went to a school district for a few years and got to see other districts outside of Fairfax County. There are some districts that have textbooks that are 10, 15, 20 years old, out of cycle. Fairfax County has always been on top of every adoption cycle, with a process that's been defined for years and years. But I think what I heard tonight is to pause for just a week, to make sure you're comfortable with what's in it. If there's something that strikes you so strongly, or the community, to not move forward, we won't move forward, and we'll use the existing textbook resources we have, whether they're aligned with the new standards or not. Hopefully, the additional time to pause, and we can find time, I think, working with Madam Chair, to find time in the work session to bring you a thumbnail sketch, to have the, the materials available in the school board office, and to get your comfort level in a place that you're willing to move forward with the process and still meet the goals. So we may not be able to replace and find something if you don't like it, but we can give you that extra moment of time to reflect and make sure that you feel comfortable before we move forward with those books. And, and that is what I want to do for the board and the community. And Dr. Presidio, and we didn't have time to chat, but if he, if he has shared, which he just has, that we can still make it work with an April, an early April approval, then I'm more than willing to support that and support and work with you all to have that work session discussion on Monday.
So with that, I will call for the vote. The motion on the table is to postpone the adoption of the high school English instructional materials until April 4th, and schedule a work session, a one-hour work session, for March 25th, to discuss the materials that are scheduled for adoption on April 4th. All those in favor? And that vote is unanimous with Mr. Moon, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Dernak-Kofax, and Mr. McElveen away from the table. I now call on Ms. Evans for a motion.
I move that the board confirm the separations for the period beginning February 1st, 2019, and ending February 28th, 2019.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hines. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I think this was to give Ms. Keys-Gamara an opportunity to, to speak.
Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your second?
No, thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, would you like to speak to your motion?
I do, thank you.
We still have seven in the room. Please go.
Okay.
Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to pull this also from the consent agenda, because this is the information that the board receives with, with respect to folks that are separated from FCPS. And I wanted to make sure I publicly asked about the breakdown of these numbers. And Dr. Brayran, I think I've asked this before, what I'm looking at, and I don't know if they can put the document up on the screen. know if they can put the document up on the screen for the public, basically gives us numbers of folks who have stepped down or for whatever reason separated from groups of employees, leadership team, principals, assistant principals, both supervisors, et cetera. But is it possible, Dr. Brabran, that this report also include demographic information?
Yes, that's something we could do.
Okay. Part of the reason I'm asking this question is I know that we're working on the equity profile, and I think that this could be possibly included as we've had a number of questions from the community with respect to our hiring, et cetera. And as we look at how people are separating, it would be helpful to see whether there are any patterns that we need to be concerned about. Thank you.
I don't have any other board members that have indicated they'd like to speak to this, so I would, Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to express my appreciation to my colleague, Ms. Karen Kiesgauara. There are times with the 12 of us that we have a consent agenda, and thankfully, with 12 eyes, 12 pairs of eyes, people end up identifying agenda items that might benefit from not just the board having an action vote on it versus consent agenda, but again, providing, I think, a little more elevated public awareness on some of these decisions we made. So I just simply wanted to, A, say how much I appreciated her doing that and am supportive of her desire to get the type of information she's described, and to also just make sure the public understood that there are these benefits when, some items that might be a very easy vote, but when they go to consent agenda, we don't speak to them, and then unfortunately, then we don't necessarily help raise public awareness, so.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. So with that, I will take the vote. All those that, the board confirms the separations for the period beginning February 1, 2019, and ending February 28, 2019. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with Ms. Schultz away from the table, Mr. Moon away from the table, Mr. McElveen away from the table, and Mr. Wilson away from the table. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, Board Award the Contract for the Boiler Replacement at Wyonoke Elementary School to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible bidder, Boiler and Furnace Cleaners, Inc., Hurley Company Division, in the amount of $310,200, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.02, Board Award a Contract for the Lee High School Synthetic Turf Field Replacement Project to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible bidder, GTR Turf, Inc., in the amount of $477,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business, the following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled for a future meeting. 7.01, Award the Contract for the Boiler Replacement at Fairhill Elementary School to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.02, Award a Contract for the Westfield High School Synthetic Turf Field Installation Project to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 8, Superintendent Matters. Next on the agenda is Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Brabran.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I wanted to let you know that Ronnie Taylor, our Director of Food and Nutrition Services for FCPS, was named a winner of the 2019 Silver Plate Award by the International Food Service Manufacturers Association in the Elementary and Secondary Schools category. Mr. Taylor joined FCPS in 2015, and as you all well know, has been responsible for a massive overhaul in our approach to food and nutrition in our schools, for expanding salad bars, for example, adding a line of entree salads and wraps, and really doing a lot more with summer feeding for our schools with kids and families that need that. He came to FCPS from Southern California, where he was instrumental in expanding the farm-to-table school lunchroom movement, and has brought that spirit here to Fairfax. The Silver Plate Awards go to individuals in one of nine categories of food service management, and we're certainly proud of Mr. Taylor for this recognition. We had 12 kids who earned grand prize awards at the 64th Annual Fairfax County Regional Science and Engineering Fair, held March 15th through the 17th at Robinson Secondary School. I appreciate Dr. Ivy heading Instructional Services as Deputy Superintendent, being there to see these great winners, as were other members of our leadership team. Winning individual grand prizes included computational biology and bioinformatics, David Tumer of Hayfield High Secondary School. For embedded systems, we had Rachel Naddich, Rashab Nisra, and Dejot Betty of TJ. For energy, chemical, we had Kay and Yang of TJ. For microbiology, we had Sarah Syed, Miamar Burgos Rosario, and Saaji Supaklang of Hayfield Secondary School. Physics and astronomy, we had Luke Marini of Lake Braddock Secondary School and Justin Wang of Chantilly High. For robotics and intelligent machines, we had Jerry Way of Oakton High School. And biomedical engineering, Justin Hugh of Madison High School. A real diversity of schools getting our top prizes at this science fair, and we're really proud. Anyone who's ever done a science project, which I did as a kid, it's a lot of work, and we're really proud of their efforts. So that's all I have to share tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Next on the agenda is Board Reports, and I call on Ms. Hines for an update from the forum held earlier this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to let the public know, if you're not aware, we have forum meetings, and we have them right here in this building, across the hall, on the same night that we have our regular, this regular business meeting twice a month. We don't always have it, but when we have a forum meeting, it's right here, right before this meeting, and the agendas are public. So what we do in our forum meetings, although it is an informal type of meeting, it is public, and there is an agenda, and the public is welcome to comment and to be there. We don't do any, we don't make any decisions at our forum meetings that are secret. So tonight, at our public forum meeting, the board approved a motion brought by Mr. McElveen to direct the board's governance committee, in collaboration with the superintendent, to develop a clear, consistent policy for excusing students from school for advocacy and/or civic engagement activities. So the governance committee will take that on. Please watch for governance committee agendas over the next few months because those meetings are also public.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I call on Ms. Strauss.
I would just like to congratulate Adam Artisher, who was a third-place finisher in the 2019 Regeneron Science Talent Search Awards. He has won a prize of $150,000 in the last 30 years. TJ has had 25 students who have been selected for the top 40 honors, and only 10 students have made it into the top 10. So this is an unusual honor for our students, so congratulations to Adam. Also like to congratulate again all of our students who participated in the Science and Engineering Fair, and to our national board-certified teachers we recognize tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes, just briefly, I do have a comment about thanking some of the parents who came and spoke earlier this evening about twice-exceptional students, students with disabilities, and the stories that have been in the public eye around restraint and seclusion. Please know that this board is taking these issues very, very seriously and working with the superintendent and staff. In particular, one of the comments had to do about discipline of students with disabilities and the disproportionate rate of 14% of our student population, but 40% of students who wind up in a discipline process. It is something that I know, in particular, Ms. McLaughlin and I have been rather dogged about, as well as some of the other board members. I am, and I continue to be concerned about the disproportionality in our discipline process, not only of students with disabilities, but of boys, which are at, you know, an infinite ratio compared to girls, and of minority students. So if you happen to be a student with disability and you're a boy, you're going to wind up in the discipline process at a rate exponential to a peer. And if you add a minority student on top of that, you're really in trouble. And so that is something that, you know, I personally am passionate about and be continuing to work with the Division Superintendent and Division Staff, particularly DSS, to keep addressing. I do want to thank the White Oaks Elementary PTA and community for inviting us, Ms. McLaughlin and I, as we share the school, to a forum with the parents and with the staff. It was excellent. They asked really probative questions, and it was a wonderful evening. And also Willow Springs, my tours of my schools have restarted, and I want to thank the Willow Springs staff and principal for inviting me for a wonderful conversation. And as we go forward with the rest of our board meetings, I do implore my colleagues that we work to have a balanced agenda that has action items. I know it's difficult as the chair and vice chair work with the superintendent, but, you know, in the course of a year, we have some board meetings that go until, you know, 1:00 in the morning, and we have others that end, you know, very early, earlier if I stop talking, but I haven't had any board minutes for a while, so I'll just take a few more minutes. But I do, I do implore us to continue to work towards the work of the board and elevate, certainly, forum topics a little bit more publicly. While they are quote-unquote "a public meeting" before this meeting, they are not on camera. There is an audio tape that eventually gets published as an MP3 on our website, if you can ever find it. But forum topics that wind up spending a lot of taxpayer money or foraying off of our regular board work, I think, require maybe a little bit more elevation into the public eye rather than getting on the agenda and then moved off into some committee work. So I do express concern about that. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. Because I'm following Ms. Schultz, I certainly agree about elevating the level of the forums, and this, in fact, is something that we've discussed, and the governance is taking a look at that, and so I hope we can move forward with that in a speedy way. So thank you for raising that, Mrs. Schultz. I want to thank the many PTA, PTO presidents who joined me in conversation, taking a time out of your Sunday afternoon to, it was a great conversation from across Mason District. So I want to thank the members who came out, and to also say that we will do it again, make sure that we can continue the conversation throughout the district. It was great to see the Just World Festival at Annadale High School a couple of Fridays ago. Just marvelous, marvelous community service that was showcased there, as well as food and performances, so kudos to Annadale for putting that on. I also wanted to say, it was lovely to talk to a group of students that visited our area from Suffolk University in Boston, and were particularly interested in learning about the Justice High School name change. And I appreciated the teachers and student, and Ms. Kiesgauara, for joining in that conversation with some very dedicated students, students dedicated to social justice. So that was, that was an excellent conversation, too. And lastly, I just want to thank Glen Forest Elementary School to invite me to be one of their guest readers at their spring into reading. It's always wonderful to join your classrooms for that kind of event and see the wonderful children and teachers and all that's going on in the classroom.
Ms. Kiesgauara?
Thank you. I want to follow up two of my colleagues, actually. I want to reiterate some things Ms. Schultz says with respect to the recent reports on restraints. We are indeed taking these concerns very seriously, and the board is, will be meeting and involved in work sessions and that sort of thing to make sure that we get to the bottom of this problem. We are not, we are very aware of how parents feel about this, and we want to make sure that we can properly handle this by doing a very deep dive. Beyond that, I'm not going to say much. I know we have to go back into closed session. I did enjoy visiting Groveton Elementary last week. I was quite amazed at their mindfulness program. It was very relaxing. I actually needed it. And I'm glad to hear that the staff, as well as the students, can benefit from that. So bravo to Groveton Elementary.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So I will preface by saying that since Mr. Moon is my seatmate, and we were at several things together, he said for me to speak for both of us. So I just want to begin with first saying, after our very robust discussion about the high school English basal instruction materials adoption, that, as noted earlier, Jason Morgan was my appointee and was really a wonderful volunteer to this committee that met multiple times over many months and sent very detailed summary notes. So I will be sharing those with my colleagues, as well as when we prepare for Monday. But truly appreciate the time and dedication that staff and the committee members did. As Ms. Schultz noted, the White Oaks Elementary PTA invited us to come, speak with them for well over an hour, and it was very enjoyable to talk with them on a variety of issues, including elementary school parents' concerns about screen time and what this means with FCPS on. I also had the pleasure, on St. Patrick's Day, to join both Mr. Moon, Mr. McElveen, and Ms. Strauss at the Regional Science Fair. As Ms. Strauss noted earlier, there was well over 1,000 students and family members, proud family members, staff, all there to honor what was just an incredible array of scientific talent, and certainly represents the tremendous talent that our students have and what they bring and the hard work. And I also want to give a shout out to the many corporations that support our students, provide them with honorary awards. Some were well over $1,000, so that is very much appreciated. I also had the pleasure of attending Lake Braddock's annual pre-assessment concert, which is led by Director Michael Lully and Jason Miller. It was fantastic. As someone who is not musically inclined, I was a singer, just to hear the instrumentals was really powerful and a beautiful reminder of the talent, again, of our students, and Dr. Brabran, the commitment of this school division to enable our students to excel at such a high level with dedicated music teachers. So that was lovely. That same night, the Lake Braddock PTA also sponsored one of our central office staff members, who is an expert on drug and alcohol awareness and prevention, and specifically the topic was on the topic was on vaping and juuling. And so I will be sending out a message on that to my community, but I wanted to spotlight it again for those who are watching, that vaping and juuling is a national epidemic, and I'm using that word with intentionality. It is something that didn't exist when many of us, growing up, who are now parents, and when you didn't have that lived experience, it's harder to look for and help your children. But it is very serious. Nicotine addiction from these vaping and juuling devices is very, very serious. So please become aware, informed, and look to our schools as partners to let them know if you're seeing this happening among your children and their friends. Also, I just want to make sure that my community knows that this coming Saturday, Dr. Braybrand and I will be at Robinson Secondary School for a free performance, and I invite any and all who would like to come. It is called "A Beera and the Mountain," and it's being sponsored by our Fairfax County Special Education PTA, along with the Connor Strong Foundation. And it is a wonderful fairy tale play written by students, performed by students who themselves have had their own challenges, but it's about inclusion and celebrating everything that we know makes students special and their abilities, not their disabilities. It's 17 actors, student actors, and really, it's a wonderful way to come out. It's a free performance, and that was something I sent out to my community. And then I did also want to make the community aware that Woodson is sponsoring a wonderful speaker who is an Olympic competitor, Olympic coach at the Rio Games. He is a former addict who overcame his drug addiction, and so he is a national speaker. He will be at Woodson next Wednesday, March 27, at 7:00 p.m. It's a free event, open to the public, but again, very much trying to help us talk about teen substance abuse and prevention, as well as a story of inspiration of people getting back on track. And finally, I just want to let my community know that I will have a budget town hall for the Braddock District for upcoming FY '20 budget, and that will be next Thursday evening at 7:00 p.m. and Supervisor Cook's Braddock District Office.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Moon?
Yeah, I think Mrs. McLaughlin has used up all my time, but I'm going to still mention about a, Mrs. McLaughlin and I both participating, attending the Avid Program presentation at Twain Middle School. That was yesterday, wasn't it? Yesterday, yesterday. I enjoyed that very much, you know, visiting, going from, you know, class to class and seeing what's happening with, you know, all the teachers basically applying what they have learned through the Avid training. It was wonderful. I would like to invite other school board members. If you haven't been to Avid classes, please go. And as far as the Student Peace Awards, I'm going to give that to Mr. McElveen to talk about later. But one thing that very noteworthy for me to mention is the Centennial Elementary School PTA meeting that I was invited to come and see. You know, I've been to many PTA meetings, but this was the first time that I actually saw a student performance be included as a part of their PTA program, right there. That gave not only students an opportunity to perform in the presence of many parents, but also parents to see the student performance, but also more parents to come to the PTA meeting, and students get to see what the adults, parents, talk about at PTA meetings as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry for the coughing fits over here. Hopefully, this is on the mend. So just very briefly, I'll run through the things that I've done, not in detail, but it's been great to join colleagues at many of these events. At FanQuest, at Lake Braddock, Just World Festival at Annandale, the Peace Awards with several colleagues, and Fairfax, the Fashion Show at Fairfax High School, the Student Demand Action Event, where Dahlia and I presented on the one-year anniversary of the student walkouts. Attended international nights at both Lee High School and West Springfield, our science fair for the region last weekend, Springfield-Franconia Area Band, mentorship fair at TJ yesterday with Mr. Moon, SAC at Edison today with Dr. Braybrand, a very stimulating discussion, earlier today with Girls Who Code at Langley, and then also with the Boy Scout Troop 987 in Vienna, speaking to them on the Constitution. So it's been a very busy time of year, and spring break is around the corner.
Ms. Palchuk?
Thank you. I, too, was able to attend several meetings, and I just want to highlight a couple that really stood out. Last week, two PTA meetings, I want to thank facility staff for joining us, and Dr. Zuluaga to speak to one of my most overcrowded schools, Shrevewood Elementary School, to start a really thoughtful and informative conversation about how we address capacity, what the school will be able to do in the short term, but then what the boundary process will be as we go along. So I think there were great questions, and more information is coming on that. And Ms. Evans and I were at Woodburn for their beautiful, large, annual PTA meeting held close to one of the communities over in Annandale, and we had interpreters, Spanish, English, huge turnout. They had a potluck and events for kids. And really want to highlight is one of the ways that when we try to engage larger parts of our community in PTA meetings, Woodburn did a really excellent job that evening. And also, in addition to joining, Mr. McElveen, the NAACP this week, Ms. Keys-Gamara and I were there, held a budget town hall down in Franconia. And I think the ability to have more of these town halls with, geographically, but also different portions of our community and questions that come up, I think, is critical. And when we do those together, schools and county, I think they were able to have a more fulfilling conversation. And one very special thing I was able to do is, as many of you have noted, and I know she walked away, but Ms. Darrenette Kofax tries to have us really address some of the dangerous behavior we see in people driving around school buses. So I want to thank staff who helped us make the life of at least one family much safer this past week in helping with our stop arms and helping look at bus routes and how we address that. I know we have a lot of work to do, but really important reminder, it is not legal to drive around a stopped school bus, and people, especially children, could get hurt. So I appreciate the community and really the community engagement and advocacy around that. And then coming up next week is our Providence District Joint Schools and County Budget Meeting. It's going to be held on Tuesday, March 26, at 7:00 p.m. at the Providence Community Center, with our staff on schools and county, both presenting, and Supervisor Smith and I will be there. And then finally, I will have my next office hours on April 4. So thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Ms. Hines? I will pass tonight. Okay, then I will be very brief. I want to, I've attended many of the same events as my colleagues, so I won't go through all of them. However, I do want to call attention to the collaborative work we will be doing with the Board of Supervisors. So after our work session on Monday night, we will be meeting Tuesday afternoon for a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors on budget, and we will also have the Economic Development Authority there to talk about how we can collaboratively work with the Board of Supervisors to support economic development and workforce development. Additionally, I just want to give a couple of shout-outs of great opportunities for people to see FCPS at its finest, and that includes our student leadership cohort will have their mock forum on the 25th of March. On the 26th of March, the Mount Vernon Pyramid Chorus will be performing. And on the 27th of March, it will be March Madness at West Potomac High School, which is a lot of fun. And then we will be at NSBA next weekend. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, actually, no, we are going into closed session, so this part of the meeting is over. But I will make a motion to convene closed meeting. The board will now make a motion to go to closed meeting to discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the assignment, performance, and/or disciplining of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia; to consult with legal counsel regarding litigation in specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, and student, and discuss student safety, and discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning one or more students pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Strauss, seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table. We are now in closed.